...of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Kim, our consent agenda?
Sure. Here's our consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, 8/12/2014 regular meetings. B, recommended approval of contracts for playground access ramp at Percy Priest Elementary School, Southland Constructors LLC. C, recommended approval of request number two for furniture at Stratford High School, GBI Inc., formerly OI Inc. D, recommended approval to declare the Old Ross Elementary Building in property at 1300 Old Place as surplus. E, awarding of purchases and contracts. One, Allegra in Nashville. Two, Batch Free Republicans Business Systems and Consultants, Inc. Four, CMS uniforms. Five, Douglas Printing, Inc. Six, Durbin and Associates. Seven, Lytton University. Eight, Parish Printing. Nine, Pritchard's boundary service company. Ten, School and Consultants LLC. Eleven, Smirnoff Graphics. F, special course application approval, global religious studies.
You heard the consent agenda, their motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as well.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Ms. Shepherd.
Madam Chair and my colleagues on the board, I'm giving notice tonight that at the next school board meeting on November 11th, actually Veterans Day, I will be bringing a resolution to the board so that we will follow our colleagues in Shelby County and pass this resolution on to the state that we fully support, fully funding BEP 2.0.
And we're going to committee reports.
Governance. Ms. Rowe.
Yes, we had a policy over meeting yesterday at lunch, and here are the policies that we discussed. First, we discussed BDR 5, which is evaluating and monitoring director performance. We have voted in proposed changes to this policy, and we expect to have a final vote on those at our next meeting. We discussed E2, academic achievement. We have agreed to redraft this policy so that it is in alignment with our academic achievement plan goals. Number three, we will continue to finesse GP 8, which is annual agenda planning. Along with this, we are updating GP 4, monitoring board governance process and board director relationship policies, and we'll have, those two policies will be in alignment. We also began a discussion of a possible board policy on recess, and finally, we intend to set a committee meeting schedule, which we will continue to discuss over the next month.
And we are deferring the Council of Great City Schools reports until the November 11th board meeting in interest of the fact that we've got two more hours of discussion ahead of us under our work session. So I thank you all for your indulgence on this four-minute board meeting. Ms. Rowe?
I'm done. I'm sorry. I'm done.
We're done.
Adjourned completely, Ms. Rowe. Adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
There you go. All right, we'll go straight into our work session now. We received, I guess, a few meetings ago, the board supported commissioning the MGT group to create a, I guess, lack of a better word, a model for us to understand the cost and fiscal impact of charter schools on the district. I think almost a year-plus ago, we had the tribal audit, and we know that those results had come in. I asked each of the board members to submit questions around the MGT report after it was sent to us, after we, the district received it and sent it out to the board members. So those questions were compiled. They were not, you have my word, I promise you, scrubbed, edited, deleted, modified. So I did give warning that there may be some duplicates in there, but I sent them on to the district to be prepared to address the questions that we, as a board, submitted. There was also, I think, two questions in there around the tribal audit. Those questions went with that list of MGT questions as well. So I would ask that we be mindful of just a couple of things. This is the report that we asked for with the intention of having a better understanding of, again, the fiscal impact of charter schools and helping us to inform the charter review and approval process. That is why the report that we did receive from charter schools, I guess, last meeting or two meetings ago, was really around current performance. It wasn't introducing anything new or any recommendations on how we proceed. We wanted to use the data that we did ask for to help inform that process. No decisions will be made tonight about what we do with that data. It's just to help us better understand the report and how the district has received that data and what their thoughts and considerations are around some of the things to consider. I don't like calling them recommendations, but the things to consider that were presented in both the MGT and tribal reports. At this point, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, and I would like to introduce Susan Zoller. Susan is with MGT of America, and she has gracefully agreed to come and be with us this evening. She has a brief, five-slide presentation just to give some information regarding the firm as well as the report. You do have a copy of the final report in front of you, and I think you've had the report now for several weeks. So Susan, if you want to make your presentation at this point, and then we'll open it up for questions. Madam Chair, is that appropriate?
Sure, yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I did promise five slides. If you count well, you'll notice there are actually seven, but that includes the cover and the thank you page at the end.
It's always allowed.
So, okay.
Always, that's good. Perfect.
So I wanted to give you just a little bit of background about this study. It was commissioned by you based on board resolution back from November, and that board resolution had a lot of wherashes and therefor's, but the real meat of it was asking for a financial impact model. As you can see, a fiscal capacity model to assess the school system's maximum annual fiscal capacity for absorbing new charter schools. So it was intended to be a model that would provide an opportunity for decision-making early on for the board rather than an evaluation of charters after they had been working for a while. The board in May hired MGT of America. MGT is a national consulting group. We work all across the country. We have had over 6,000 successful engagements, including many right here in metropolitan Nashville. We have done a facility review for Metro Nashville before. We've done some other work for the Davidson Metro Council and other organizations. We started this study with a goal of really thinking about how to support your needs identified through that resolution. I'm going to talk about all those things down the left-hand side, but what I really want to focus on is making sure I get to your questions as well. There must be something I need to do. Once more, there we go. All right, let me briefly describe what we did in order to gather this report for you. I and several of my colleagues spent several days here, meeting with internal staff as well as staff from charter schools and the Tennessee Charter Association. We really focused on what your charge was that came out of that resolution and paid attention to that. We wanted to make sure we understood the information that the district had. We brought with us a financial specialist who had done a lot of work. He had been the financial, chief financial officer for a very large school district and brought that background to the work. We spent time interviewing your staff and, as I say, interviewing the charter school folks and developing the recommendations and that decision-making model that we've put together. So the report really has two sections. The first is fiscal impact, and the goal was to understand what the financial implications are for each charter. As you know, the state requires that there is 100% transfer of the state and local funds. Every time there is a charter school student, 100% of the funds for that student go to that school. That's not something that the district invented. That's what the state law requires. In your report, you'll see that we have identified the enrollments for charter schools. The charter school enrollment in this district is going up. It's going up significantly, and it goes up every year even if you don't, even if you do not approve a single more charter school. No new charter schools starting today. Your charter school enrollment will continue to go up because most of the charters are still adding a grade every year. So if you look at Exhibit, Exhibit 1 identifies the number of students in the schools as they've been approved. Exhibit 2 takes that and spreads it out over the next years until we get to 2020 for Exhibit 2. And then Exhibit 3 takes those charter school enrollment numbers and compares them to MNPS. And what we discovered is that over the last few years, yes, charter school has been growing, but so has MNPS enrollment. Those numbers are going to stop going up for MNPS. The charter school enrollment is going to increase faster, and the MNPS enrollment is going to slow down. And in fact, if you look at Exhibit 3, you can see by the time we get to, even starting this year, 2014-15, total increase is 2.92%. 1.14% is MNPS, but the charter increase is significantly higher than that, and it's going to continue over time, especially if you continue to have more charter schools. So we looked at the enrollments, both charters and MNPS, and what was projected into the future. We looked at per pupil expenditures here in MNPS, and tried to understand those. We explored your current operating budget, identified direct costs that the district pays to support charter schools. Whether you have one or 10, you are paying approximately $514,000 to support those charter schools because you have to. You have someone who is reviewing applications and monitoring charter schools. You have people in the finance, sorry, in the benefits office who are required to handle benefits. That's not something that the charter schools can do. They're required to handle that for the retirement board, and so there are direct costs that we could identify of $514,000. There are indirect costs also, explained in the report, that are more difficult to quantify if the federal programs folks spend some time working on charter schools or if transportation spends some time working on charter schools. It's not a dedicated person like it is in our direct cost area. So there are some indirect costs that could be broken out, and in fact, in the report, we gave you an example of a way that it could be quantified, what the indirect costs are for charter schools. That's not the only model, but we tried to give you an example of a way that you could, if you wanted to, begin to get a handle on what those indirect costs might be. So our two recommendations based on the fiscal side were to look at those indirect costs, figure out what they actually were, and decide what you wanted to do with those, and to do some separate fund accounting so that you could more clearly break out expenditures. We also looked at the impact on MNPS of charter schools based on capital projects and facilities. As you know, some of charter schools are in, located in MNPS buildings that you're not using, and they pay a lease fee. So we explored what the impact of having charter schools in your schools would be, and we also looked at what, whether it was possible that charter schools would, in that the district didn't have to build some new buildings. If you had a charter school move into an area that was very crowded and you needed more space, that would alleviate the fact that the district would have to buy portables or to have to add an addition or to build a new school. So we looked at both of those scenarios and tried to evaluate what the impact of that was. One of the things that we looked at was the leases that you currently have with charter schools. At the moment, the lease is covering mostly just the utility costs, mostly just the cost of keeping the building going. Long-term leases, if there's a long-term lease, then the leasing has an opportunity to request permission from you to put a new roof on the building or replace the flooring or put new windows in, but that reduces the amount of lease money that they will pay for you, pay to you on a monthly basis. Your leases at the moment do not include a long-term depreciation, so that you are generating funds in order to think about putting a roof on when the building needs one for it. There is a value, however, in having a building occupied. As it says there, there's a value of leasing a building rather than having it emptied. Most towns and most cities, most areas do not, do not feel like having an empty vacant building is a very attractive feature for real estate prices. And so there is some value in having a building leased, even if you're not charging the charter school very much money or charging the leasing very much money. So we looked at both of those cases where, that you were leasing it and other capital costs, and made some recommendations. We suggested that you might want to consider adding a depreciation amount to any lease that you have into the future so that that is built in as part of that lease cost, and further that you identify areas where growth is happening across your city and where a charter school, if they moved into that area, could support that growth without you having to build new schools or add portables or any of those kinds of capital costs. That led us to create a model for you because that was the charge, to create a model on which you could make future decisions about charter schools. So the model uses kind of a red, green, yellow approach, similar to a stoplight. If there is a new charter school and it is a conversion of one of your existing schools and it is a school charter agent, agency that you know well, it's important that you know someone well enough to know that they are going to provide a quality product. Therefore, on the far side, you can see conversion, proven academic performance, that is green-lighted. Whereas a conversion school with a new agent that you might not know, you don't know that they're going to be producing a quality product, you might have to consider that as a, as a yellow rather than as a green light. If it's a new application and it is in an area that is underutilized, you already have lots of space there, you don't need a charter school to come in and help you with capital expenditures, that might have a red light on it. If it's in an overutilized area and a place where you really need some more space and you need a charter school to help you with that, we show it as green. And a replication of a charter school, which is an extension beyond that, again, we use the over and underutilized with a green for overutilized area and a red for underutilized area. Our goal was to give you a tool that you could use for making future decisions because it's a fact that charter schools cost you some money. This approach will give you an opportunity to think about that and make decisions based on the fiscal model. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Here with Ms. Rowe.
All right. My first question is, are the administration costs for traditional schools part of the per pupil expenditure? Is that considered?
Well, the amount that goes to the charter schools is the full state and local revenue amount of the entire district, so it's the entire operating budget of the district. So yes, it would include all administrative costs of the district.
Okay, so the services that we're offering to the charter schools, they are receiving essentially the per pupil expenditure, which would cover administrative costs, but we're also offering them some peripheral services as well?
Correct. I think that's what the MGT was saying in relation to-
Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Correct, and indirect costs.
Okay. So I have some kind of peripheral issues that weren't addressed in this study I think that we ought to think about when we are, think about the impact financially these issues might have on the district. So one issue that has to do with facilities. So when a charter school, a lot of the charter schools, and I think this is what Andre Agassi is doing with his model, they will have an investor come in and buy the facility, and then taxpayer dollars are used to pay off the facility, and that money goes back to the investor. So the taxpayer dollars that we would be using for our own capital costs within the district have now been diverted outside of the district. And I think that's something we need to think about. I don't know if you want to address that. Another thing that I think is a big issue has to do with the fund, hold on, let me get my notes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Rowe, can we do this?
Yes.
Make sure everybody has time.
Sure.
Because we're trying to do an hour for each topic.
Okay.
And we'll go around and you get your-
Come back, question ready. Sure, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Pierce?
So we just have a couple of questions now.
Just do one question.
Do one question now. All right.
Make it a good one.
I'll stay on the facility part then. In your audit of the facility, did you also study or account for the capital improvements that the charters are making to the buildings that MNPS ultimately owns?
The improvements that they're making, it means they're in a building that has a long-term lease on it, right, and that's built into their lease, that they can request that, and those improvements have to be approved by the school district. And when they make those improvements, those dollars mean they don't pay the lease for the next X number of months, right? So instead of getting, I mean, if you're a landlord and you get a monthly rent, if you're essentially getting rent credit for putting a roof on. And yes, it absolutely improves the facility and it maintains the facility, and that's a really good thing. What we're suggesting is that every lease, short-term or long, needs to have a factor built in for depreciation. And the district could still decide to continue allowing people to do that. I mean, that's investing in their own building and investing in their own future, and that's terrific. But the other buildings that are leased right now, short-term, do not have a depreciation factor in there. So there's nothing being built up. There's no, there's no savings account being developed that you, as a district, can use to replace the windows or replace the flooring or do something major on each of those buildings. And that means you, as a district, are going to be incurring long, or potentially incurring long-term cost.
So you didn't total up at all all the monies that the charters have put into MNPS buildings?
No, because it really wasn't, we didn't need to do that in order to answer this piece of the question.
Ms. Pinkston?
Just a couple of comments, then I want to put a stake in the ground for the conversation, for later in the conversation. I would say something that probably surprised people. I don't have any issue at all with half a million dollars' worth of direct costs supporting charter schools out of a $790 million budget, in the same way that I don't have a problem and would encourage investment in pre-K. I think if, you know, if we're getting good results with it, then let's find a way to absorb that. That's nominal. I also don't have an issue with, you know, lack of adequate lease compensation. I mean, we don't charge rent to our traditional schools. I'm not sure why we should do it to other schools. But, you know, my issue with all of this is I don't think we can have unabated growth of new schools of any type without it having an operationally and fiscally destabilizing effect on the rest of the budget. I was talking with a mayoral candidate the other day, and they were questioning me about my position on this, and I said, "Well, look, what if I went to you and said, 'Hey, Mayor, good news, we're going to add 22 new schools, new traditional schools over the next five years,'" which is essentially what we've done with charter schools. You know, "What would you say?" The response was, "I would say, 'Okay, what's this going to cost?'" And my response back was, "It's not going to cost a thing," which is completely disingenuous, but that's what we keep hearing repeatedly from the charter movement. So if we can tonight at least begin arriving at a consensus on what we're going to ask for in terms of strategic priorities for 2015, I would love to have that conversation tonight because I don't think where we're going is remotely fiscally sustainable. The budget as a whole has been growing at 4%, 4.1% a year. Over the last few years, the charter sector, cash outlays for the charter sector is growing at 45.6%, 45.3%. I mean, anybody who's been around government for any length of time knows that's not sustainable. So if we could really focus, you know, on the sustainability issue, I would really appreciate that. Thanks.
A statement and a question. So charters absolutely cost us money, and so does Lachland, and so does Graymar, and so does Hattie Cotton, and so does every other single school in the district. So that question is actually not interesting to me, or even that statement that charters cost us money is, to me, not, I mean, useful statement because they all cost money. Schools cost money. So the biggest question I have is what is the return on the investment? And my biggest question is around how you assess quality when talking about cost. Quality of education, number of proficient and advanced students in a building, because the real cost to society is when we, in fact, don't educate and graduate students who are ready for college and life.
Sure, great, thank you. We did spend some time, I interviewed the director and his assistant from the Tennessee Charter Schools Association. We have read through their report on the, where to find a quality seat in this school district, and we paid a fair amount of attention to the academic performance model that the school district has put in place. And really, you are, as a school board, to be commended that you have such a model in place where you're looking at the product that you are creating. However, this was a fiscal impact study and not a quality impact study, and our charge was to help you identify a process to make that decision at the beginning rather than at the end. And we tried to address that in that model that's shown on the last page of the report, where if a school district, if a school is being proposed by someone who is a known entity for providing a quality charter school experience, absolutely green-light it. If it's someone brand-new, then I think you would be remiss if you didn't pay attention through your charter school application process to whether that is indeed going to be a positive educational experience, which is what I hear all the board members wanting. You want to create a positive educational experience for all of your children, and we never heard anyone in the district or outside of the district say that charter schools are bad or shouldn't exist. What we did hear people saying is that some charter schools are doing a really, really good job, and we looked at that and tried to factor that into this model.
So I'm just going to pick up, I think, where Ms. Kim has left off, because I think it's kind of maybe contradictory or confusing to say you didn't consider it in the modeling, but the model you have given us requires us to consider quality. So I, you know, and I don't, I guess ultimately, we have to, we're going to have to, this is going to be hard. This is, it's an understatement, I think. It's going to be very, very hard. But I'll come back to my comments because I really don't have a question. I think the report did what we asked for. It provided, but the fact that it does not contain a lens of quality, and we're sitting here charged with providing high-quality seats within the district, that's a hard balancing act. And we will eventually, to Mr. Pinkston's point, have to have the conversation that says, you know, and I don't know, what I would have to say, Ms. Pinkston, at this point, is I don't know that we have all the right information to even get to that point. To start the discussion, absolutely, but to make the decision about how we decide on charter growth within the district, if we believe cost is a significant factor. And if we're talking about costs as upfront costs versus, I think, to Ms. Kim's point, what are the long-term, the short-term costs are what we have to pay to put that child in a seat. The long-term costs are how, the quality of the education that the student receives, how it impacts the view of the district as a quality district, and then the quality of a graduate that ultimately gets produced out of, through that system. But I'll keep going with questions. Ms. Shepherd?
Actually, I think I have more of an observation than a question, and it revolves around the, I guess, Exhibit 3, around the total enrollment. And it seems that even though we are increasing our charter school enrollment every year, we are still increasing the enrollment in our zone schools and our traditional schools. And Chris, I don't know if you have a total enrollment figure for this year, but we still saw an uptake of what, over 2,000 students?
Yes, this year, our enrollment grew by roughly 1,700 students over the year before, and so you are correct. Up until this point, the district growth, while charter schools have been growing and starting up, the district growth has been able to offset that in certain tiers. If you look in various tiers, in middle school tier, you'll see that our enrollment has already started to dip.
that our enrollment has already started differing more so. But overall district enrollment, we've been able to keep pace with that. However, if you look at the number of charter schools that are approved and the continual adding of grades every year, that's where eventually, probably in the very near future, the charter school growth will surpass the district growth, and that's what this report, I believe, indicates.
Just to add to what Anna said, on page eight, it's interesting to see the increase in charters, 2013, 14, 16.32%, 14, 15, 36, almost 37%, 15, 16, 48, 49%. Whereas the increase in metro schools, 13, 14, is only 1.56%. I guess that's the student you were just referring to, is that right?
That is correct. That's the charter percentage of increase, so that's the net gain of charter school enrollment. You have to also keep in mind that built into that is some of the conversion schools as well. So those numbers are also factored into that growth there.
And I think the concern of many of us, certainly my concern, is that in 2015, 2016, MNPS enrollment is projected to decrease by almost 3%. And that's where, so we are reaching a tipping point of where it's going to be even more difficult if we sustain the growth that we have right now. And I appreciate the recommendations that you've made, and at the point where we are able to talk more, I'd like to hear more about what you think about the recommendations and what your plans are. Thank you.
Ren?
So, just wondering if the conversions add to the district, or are they adding to the charters? Just for clarity.
They sort of do both, because as they convert from an MNPS to a charter, then they become more charter and less MNPS. But one of the things that, as a district, you have chosen to do, for example, in a conversion school, is keep a full-time MNPS principal until the conversion is complete. And that is, that's an expense that you've chosen to make. It is a commitment to those children because you see it as one of your schools still, but it is an added expense in those conversion schools to maintain that administrative piece under MNPS. But they become more and more charter and less and less district.
By year?
By each year.
Okay.
I guess my only concern outside of academic achievement and success there would be, how would the conversions relate with central office staff in charters versus central office staff in traditional public schools? So what would be the growth conversions?
Not quite sure I understand the question, but what, let me take a stab at it. What we've done up until now is absorb with existing central office, and actually, you'll see that the numbers of central office have actually declined, but we've tried to absorb the additional responsibilities in existing staff. We've not made a decision to increase staff in any of those areas that service priority schools in particular. However, the recommendations state that we should consider that, and I think that's one place where we are at a tipping point now, where in Mr. Coverstone's office, for example, staff's very stressed in terms of the number of charter schools they have and the other schools that they're working with, and we'll have to begin looking at shifting personnel or changing responsibilities. I'd ask you to respond to that, too, in terms of your report.
Sure. For example, when you add one charter school, it isn't all that much more work, but at some point, when you have as many as you have now and that you're going to be adding for next year, the one person in the charter school office who reviews all the applications with a team of folks, I understand that, and manages that, can no longer manage 23-plus schools. Now, if that means there are fewer MNPS schools, maybe you don't need as many people managing, monitoring, supporting the principals in MNPS schools. And it's that tipping point that you described a few minutes ago that is hard to say exactly when that comes. But at some point, you begin to say, "We need more people here and fewer people there," and that's a...
So what I was saying is, with more charters, that means you're going to not require as much administrative staff as you would. So it's going to rise here, whereas I'm wondering what it would look like here with traditional. So I don't know if you guys included that, but I think Dr. Register considered, may have understood my question.
Wait, this is not meant as any sort of criticism of your work. I think it's an excellent report, so I'm just, this is an ever-evolving issue. And so, here's another issue that's happening in our two major cities that have the majority of charter schools, which are Nashville and Memphis. The BEP statute was amended in 2007 to increase funding for English learners and also for at-risk students. And that money is, and I'm asking you, Chris, so you can correct anything that's wrong. So that money is provided to the district in a pot. But currently, in both Memphis and Nashville, all new available revenue is going to the charter schools as they continue to grow. So the money, that money is going, the money that is meant for English learners and at-risk students is going to the charter schools, and it's never actually reaching the students who it's intended, who, the students that the money is intended to fund. Do you have any thoughts or comments on that? I think that's come up at the BEP review committee meeting.
Just a brief comment. As you said, the increase in additional revenue that's come to this district, it's a combination of state revenue, additional state revenue, and additional local revenue. And as you said, a part of the state revenue is for, generated based upon numbers of at-risk, which are defined as students that qualify after free and reduced meals, and number of English learner students. Not that it's required to be spent on those students, since it's the BEP's funding formula and not a spending plan. I think it could also be said that the monies that are going to the charter schools through the MNPS budget are also going to educate at-risk students and ELL students that are in charter schools. And so it very well could be going to those types of students, even though it's not prescriptive in nature as far as the funding goes, it's just a revenue generator. So it's hard to say exactly how much of that money from the BEP formula is going to the district, to those particular types of students, and how much of that money is going to the charter schools for those particular types of students.
Do we have a way of measuring that?
Well, again, since it's not a prescriptive formula, it doesn't designate the funding to go to educate certain types of students. As you said, it's one big pot of money. We could look and see through the formula how much is generated for English learner students and for our at-risk students. And we can easily look at the district budget and determine from year to year how much those particular areas have increased. It's more difficult on the charter side to know exactly how those monies are being spent. So it may be a little difficult in looking at it in total.
Okay. Can I ask one more, or do you mean a lot? It's a quick one. I'll wait. All right. Why are the charters not paying a percentage of cost on the first few years of conversion? They're not paying any rent during the conversion, is that correct? Why is that?
That is correct. As far as Cameron goes, Cameron was a partnership with the district where the district sought out a collaborative partner to convert Cameron into a charter. And so it was felt that with that type of partnership, there has not been any rent charged to lead at Cameron as that school has converted all the way now to a full charter school. With the Brick Church conversion, since it's a part of the Achievement School District, the district basically has applied the same logic, that until the school is a full charter school, then the district has determined that it would not charge rent to, I guess, the prorated space, because the district still has a presence in Brick Church through its eighth grade, in its eighth-grade class. And so it would require a proration of square footage or a proration of space if rent were to be charged, but that has not been done.
Since this was a cost study, I'm wondering if you also were looking at, and I know you
studied charters, but Chris or Derek Ritchie, what is the cost average that we're spending on education for an MNPS student? I know that the charter schools get the designated amount, well over 9,000. What comes out per people in our other schools is a different formula, so it can vary widely. I'm just looking at the priority schools, and they vary from, you know, 9,000 to 14.6. And just didn't know if you have an average there on what it's costing an MNPS to educate it through a traditional school?
Not off the top of my head. The difference in those definitions is the per-pupil amount that's transferred to the charter schools is strictly state and local revenue. Included in the numbers that we calculate for district schools is not just state and local revenue, but it also includes all federal funding, which would include Title I funding, any federal school improvement grants or other type grants that those type priority schools might have. And it's going to vary from school to school, basically for two different reasons. One is, if you have the lower class sizes like we do at our enhanced option schools, that is going to increase the per-pupil amount that goes to those schools significantly. And also, if you have a more experienced teaching force, that since our teacher salaries are heavily, of course, based upon experience and educational attainment, then those teacher salaries are going to be higher, which is going to translate to a higher per-pupil amount. But I guess the main answer to your question is, the per-pupil amount that's transferred to the charters is just state and local revenue on average, and it's calculated by the State Department of Education. And the numbers that we include for our schools include all sources of funding, which would include all, if I said, federal Title I funding plus grants, which are also available to charters that they can apply for on their own.
Okay. So, but, you know, at the end of the recommendation, it was brought in on quality, and then we need to have those ongoing discussions, too. Are we getting the return on investment for what we're paying at a district school? And so I think that's kind of bringing that focus around to those results.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we get caught every time in this room debating traditional schools versus charter schools. And so I just want to say, charter schools are schools, period. And the return on investment notwithstanding, we cannot have continued unabated growth of new schools of any type, charter magnet, traditional, or others, without significant new revenue or cuts elsewhere in the system. And as much as we might like to, we would not rubber stamp the creation of 22 new Hume Fogs, because we know the money is not there, there are limits to what we can fund. And let's not forget, the charter sector has had a nearly 20% failure rate, so it's not all rainbows and cotton candy here. I think common sense, and now MGT tells us, we need to set priorities. And then the most important part, I think we ought to stick to the priorities and not get pulled off-center out of political expediency. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, Madam Chair, I want to reflect for a minute on the 2014 strategic priorities we articulated. Then I'd love to hear reactions from management about what they intend to do with this new information. So I still support, as I did last year, the idea of partnering with qualified charter operators and conversions of low-performing schools. Unfortunately, it does not sound like that priority is working out very well because of our failure in public engagement. When KIP stepped forward and accepted the partnership offer, I thought that was a good thing, but it sounds like the Office of Innovation then did not hold up our end of the bargain. After we approved that conversion proposal in June, we should have immediately started communicating with parents and families at prospective conversion schools to get them bought into the concept. Instead, we're now in a situation where there's been a lot of back-and-forth publicly, excuse me, a lot of back-and-forth behind the scenes, a lot of speculation publicly, but no meaningful parent or community engagement on whatever school we decide to try to potentially give to KIP. That destroys trust in the community, it undermines the process, and it makes already difficult situations nearly impossible to manage. So when the time comes next month for Dr. Register to announce that he wants to offer Inglewood or some other school to KIP, then the entire conversation automatically starts off on the wrong foot. I think conversion is a worthwhile idea that, as usual, is suffering from poor communications, and we need to fix that next year. Regarding the second priority, growth management is every bit as viable as it was when we approved it a year ago, as we see from MGT. This is one area where I think, with all due respect, the report might not have gone far enough. As I read it, you're recommending that we consider charters for any area with overcrowded schools, but I think we've got to be a little bit more discerning than that. There's a big difference between schools in areas that are at 101% capacity and those that are up to 135% capacity, like some of our elementary schools in South Nashville. On Sunday, I drove a big swath of the district just to see what's happening in some of these exceedingly overcrowded schools. The first school I visited was Paragon Mills Elementary, which is in Ms. Hunter's district, but it's two or three blocks outside of mine. Paragon Mills and the Glen Cliff Cluster is currently at 127% capacity. I counted 16 portables out back, which I'm guessing house a couple hundred kids. This school, which is 50% English learners, is in target status on the academic performance framework. Next school I visited was Tuscalum Elementary, which is in Dr. Brandon's district, just south of mine. Tuscalum in the Overton Cluster is at 135% capacity, and I counted 19 portables that probably also house a couple hundred kids. I actually got lost in the middle of that portable farm, there were so many of them, I had to go through it two or three times to get an accurate count. Tuscalum, which is 63% English learners, also is in target status on the APF. So we have really clear and compelling academic, cultural, and growth management needs in the elementary tiers in the Glen Cliff and Overton clusters that charters could help us with if we really wanted to make that happen. Instead, Dr. Coverstone disregards the board and brings us a proposal for a middle school in the McGavick Cluster. The McGavick middle tier is not nearly as academically challenged as the Glen Cliff and Overton elementary tiers, and at 93% capacity, it's not even close to being overcrowded, despite what he told us when the application was brought to the board. So I want to think about this a different way for a change. I hope the weather stays unseasonably warm right now, but the reality is, it's going to get cold soon. And hundreds of elementary school students, the youngest kids in our system, are going to be sitting in cold portables at Paragon Mills and Tuscalum and other South Nashville schools this winter, instead of sitting in warm traditional schools or warm charter schools that may be benefiting from innovative English learner strategies if somebody here had been thinking ahead and acting strategically. So instead, we spent years waiving in new capacity in East Nashville and North Nashville, to the point that it's destabilized other parts of the system, those parts of the system. So here's the question. Whenever we receive new academic data, Ms. Kim always asks the question, "What are we going to do with this information?" So now that we have actionable information about the fiscal impact of these schools, let me ask you, Dr. Register, what are we going to do with the information? Please be specific. I mean, are we going to do what families do when budgets are stretched thin, cut back on consumption, or are we just going to keep running up the credit card and sending the bill along to the taxpayers?
I'm sorry, I don't understand that question.
Are we going to try to put limits on the number of charters that we bring to this board to approve in 2015?
We don't take issue with the priorities that the board set, and we would expect to be responsive to those. Are we going to set limits? You know, we identify our priorities as we did last year, and we receive applications, and the committees review those applications and make recommendations to the board, and then the board votes up or down.
And where does fiscal impact come into it in 2015?
In this year, in 2015. I think we take this report, I think it's a start, I think it's not the complete answer. There are other questions that are being asked by the board, but we, I think there's some good recommendations in here. I think we need to look at indirect costs. I think we need to start factoring those in. In fact, we've done some of that, we've begun that work already. I think we're getting to a tipping point in terms of impact district-wide, and I think good questions have been asked about that, and so we respond to that. Alan, you want to say anything?
Other than say, I don't disagree with almost anything that I've heard you say tonight, I agree totally. And I think that the work of making the difficult choices is hard, and we need everybody's help in order to do that. And we need to do better with that every time we go out to try to make the difficult choices. But there are going to be difficult choices, and we'll have to make those in fiscal impact. And this study and any others that come along will help us to know what that actual measure is.
In almost any other expenditure that the district undertakes, there's a conversation that I assume happens somewhere with Mr. Henson and others that says, "Can we afford this?" And it's just like, I used the analogy of a family the other day, or a minute ago, you know, you have to make the call, you know, at what point is too much? And there has been too much consumption, too fast on this side, on this sector. Do you agree with that? Do you agree with that or not? And, and what is the plan to ameliorate it if you agree with it?
Yeah, I would only say that there is a cost to underperformance as well, as you know, and have said tonight, you know? So we have to make sure that we're balancing those costs. And we don't have complete freedom of action here because we do have to account for the appeals process, and we have to make sure that we are defensible when we go to appeals. And we've tried very hard to make sure that our appeals are as defensible as possible when we offer suggestions and recommendations to the board.
Well, if you're talking about what the state, how the state reacts, I mean, since when were we concerned about that? We weren't concerned about it two years ago, obviously with great hearts. But, you know, the state board, the chair of the State Board of Education has already said that what we propose to do makes sense, and it was working until we decided to throw it overboard at your recommendation. So, you know, Dr. Chen, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, and it's clear that they're not going to answer directly the question, but we've got to do something that makes sense because this thing is not sustainable. I mean, and if you guys, do you guys not agree with that? I mean, that's just a kind of yes or no question. 22 schools in five years?
Well, it's not sustainable as underperformance in our schools. Students have to have opportunities, and we've got to add those kinds of seats.
Then get on a plane and fly all over the country and start recruiting qualified conversion operators. All right? I mean, Dr. Register, do you think the rate is sustainable at where we've been?
Depending on the growth, I think the, I think the growth is very rapid. I think the, at the present rate of growth and the present projections, I think it's not sustainable. I think we have to look very critically. I think we have to reexamine every year what the, what the process looks like and what our, what our expectations are, what our priorities are, and, and respond to that. Is it sustainable to put charter schools in South Nashville? I think that that can give us some relief. I don't disagree with the priorities that have been established.
So I, okay. So I think that there is a fundamental difference here from just the average budget. Honey, should we go out to dinner tonight? No, because we owe X amount of dollars and, you know, we have to pay the light bill tomorrow. I think that those are, those are a little easier to do. And again, the challenge continues to be, and what we have to do when we, when we sit back and decide, how do we use this data, is what do we value? Right? So when we budget in any industry or any entity that budgets, anything that you read, it will tell you that from personally, to a family, to a company, to any organization, your values are reflected in your budget. You budget for what's important. You budget for what you value. And I think I hear Mr. Pinkston saying, it's not about what not to do, it really is what else has to be done to continue to do what we're doing. So if we continue to value putting quality seats, increasing the number of high-quality seats, or, or seats that give us a, a high return on our investment, I'll put it that way, to keep it in the fiscal vernacular, then we have to figure out what is it going to take to make that happen. And I don't think anybody is saying that the only answer is to not approve additional charters. But if, if additional charters, we're getting applications from providers that we believe will give us that additional high-quality seat, translated to an additional seat that will give us a great return on that investment, what are the other decisions we need to make on this side to make that happen? And I think the conversation just has to get bigger. And, you know, a lot of the comments around this table and questions are coming across as, you know, well, stop picking on charters, let's take a look at districts, stop picking on districts, let's take a look at charter. And I don't think, I think that we have to step back and get a little bit more fundamental about what are we originally charged with. I said this the very first board meeting. Our only responsibility is to create an environment where we have high, we can ensure to the best of our ability, the academic success of all of our children in the district. And, and the conversation has to get bigger. I have asked for, and I would love to see, from just a more practical and inconscionable perspective, us putting all those other factors in place. That's when it gets difficult, right? The simple answer is high-quality seats. The other answer is where are they needed? How many of them do we need? And not even can we handle, do we need? What are our needs across the district? And paint that picture before we start looking at applications. And that's what I have, have asked for, that even in our, even to get to the point where I can paint that picture before applications come in, so that I can say, as I look across the district, if I look at a performance map, if I take that APF and put it, you know, on a map, where is my concentration of red? And if I can take the same overlay of growth of students, where is the highest growth that I'm going to start needing portables as opposed to being able to put students in a classroom? So if we can, if the conversation starts from where we, what we need, and then we look at charters as an option, one of the strategies to creating high-quality seats in the district, then it becomes more of, again, I keep using, I used to use the phrase, a pull instead of a push. And then, you know, if we get the support from the state that says, well, what you're doing makes sense, it's, it's sustainable, you know, it's, it's having a vendor that, and I guess that this is the only thing that doesn't sit well with me, is having a vendor come to me and says, this is what I have, this is what it's shaped like, you find a place to put it. As opposed to, here is what I need, can you shape something for me?
I'm not sure that is exactly what happened with Stride.
That fills the need that, that I have. And so, you know, what I'll say is, we, as the board, we need to work together with the district staff to kind of craft that, that, and then provide the cover that that office is going to need. Because at the end of the day, I am all for taking the position that we believe is right as a district. But I am not for standing back when the backlash of it comes. So we have to also be prepared for the fact that whatever we, if we get 10 applications and we say that these are the five that are willing to go where I need that support, and then the state comes back and gives us the other five, we haven't changed the fiscal impact, the dollar, the fiscal impact is still the same. So I think that the, you know, right now it's more of a principled discussion until we can understand, until the state gets to the point, or until the process morphs into a point that is supportive of what we believe needs to happen as a district. You understand what I'm saying? Because at the end of the day, if the state turns around and gives us the other five, this fiscal impact discussion in the framework that we've painted of one that we can maintain gets shot out of the window either way. So, but I, I still support and have for a long time, having the conversation that crafts the need, and that we ask charter providers to be partners in helping to improve the number of quality seats that we have where we need them.
Can I just follow on that for a minute? The, you know, state law has a provision in it that allows us to, state law has a provision in it that allows us to make these kind of determinations and say, look, it's gotten to a point in this particular cycle where this is contrary to the best interests of our district. We've never even attempted to make that argument. And, and instead, you know, we didn't have any strategic priorities until the board took the initiative to articulate those last year and put them in place. So, you know, like, get ahead of the conversation. And, and the other thing that concerns me is after, after this Stride application was recommended, now there, you've, you've essentially removed tension from the system by doing that. There was a tension in the system, there was, there were incentives for charter operators to play by the same rules, but now you sent the message to the, to the charter community that the rules don't matter, and I'll, you know, just do anything. So, you know, I don't know what to expect. Even if we could manage to come together and articulate priorities for 2015, the whole process is undermined because, you know, you threw them out the window, Dr. Coverstone. The, the other thing that is problematic is, well, it goes back to this conversion conversation. We've got to do a better job getting ahead of family and community engagement. A, primarily because it will make the conversion more successful when it happens, but, but B, you know, nobody's going to trust this process. You know, if, if in fact we're saying we want to work with partners, but we want to work with partners except for parents and families, you know, and bring them in at the last minute, that's not acceptable. And that undermines the process as well. So just, it's very frustrating to watch all this.
Kim?
Yep. Just to double click on something that you said, Sharon, is, yeah, I mean, the biggest question for me, and I appreciate the statement, that this could quickly devolve into just like charter, anti-charter, traditional versus like, none of that stuff is like, the only thing to me that matters in the whole discussion is just whether or not we're putting our kids on a trajectory that's going to allow them to make choices in life, period. And in order for them to do that, like, they're going to have to have a really strong academic base. That's the, the most important thing. And then how we deploy then the billion dollars that we have at our disposal, because with operating expenses plus capital outlays, we're talking literally a billion dollars in our hands to deploy, to ensure then that every kid, regardless of their color, socioeconomic background, like, present academic achievement, like, we have a billion dollars to ensure then that every kid gets a chance to sit at this table, if they want. And if they don't want to, great, they're probably smarter than us. But the point is, is that...
Yes.
The point is that, and I, I do think that is what we all value. Like, that's why we ran for these seats, that's why we're sitting at this table, even taking time to argue with each other about what needs to happen. And so it's like, I appreciate, so, so it's a statement of just what we value, I think that we do value that. And if we're truly agnostic then about how we provide that, you know, it's like what we're going to privilege in all of this is students first, you know, not the adults in the system, but literally the students first, then I think we would think bigger about not just like, how much growth have we gained, or how much is the growth? No, we have a billion dollars. We choose how that's deployed within the system, whether it's here, or there, or there, or we hoard it, that might, like, we choose. And so I guess, and so when I think about this work, I would like to expand the conversation to talk about then how do we deploy the billion dollars to ensure then that we're getting the kinds of results for our kids that we want. And I think then there is a way, you know, and I'm mindful, Will, I think you're right, that we, we have to have a strategy. I mean, I appreciate that statement, I agree that the strategy, which is why I've been sort of ranting and raving about the academic performance framework and using that as a tool to really clearly communicate, like, really transparently communicate to ourselves, to the district, to all of our schools, to the entire community, parents, kids, teachers, everybody, you know, what we value and what we're going to hold people accountable to so they know the expectations and can operate then and rise to the expectation. And if it can't happen, then they also know the consequences, which is that we might then convert, we might shut down, we might do any number of things, we might switch out the leader, we might, but everyone knows the rules. And then that does help, I think, get in front of a lot of the communication challenges, which I appreciate. I'm in the middle of the communication firestorm right now. And so I, I do think that that is real, and that to the degree we can actually lay out then, right, the clarity of expectations and consequences that we have, which we are, starting point is the academic performance framework, that's part of the bigger conversation, I think the better off we are. Because it deals with a lot of the communications challenges, it helps sort of like make very difficult decisions. Not necessarily, easier is not quite the word I'm looking for, but easier. I mean, at least everyone knows how it's going to work. And so, yeah, but I, I just, yeah, I feel like in all of this, I think this is, and I understand what you were saying too, it's like, this feels like a sliver, or I think you were saying this, like, this is like a sliver of a set of costs that we're having, that we're discussing, yeah, but we need to actually expand it to just say, like, if we privilege then the most kids' academic attainment, because we know that academic attainment will determine what they do in life, then we have to figure out then how to spend the pot of money appropriately.
You have another? Ms. Beard?
Yes, I have several comments. It's undeniable that we've got a problem with escalated cost. It's undeniable. And right now we're spending more than half a million dollars a year in indirect and direct costs, is that right? And so the question is, how do we recover this? And as I'm thinking about it, and as, I suspect, Alan, that you can put this in the application, I know we had an issue with the trust company, with our trust insurance, and we needed to, it's actually coming out of our teachers' pay to, to get the money from charters that is costing us. So I understand you can put that in the application, but as I was reading this information, it appeared to me that even if you put it in the application, the charter company can still say, I'm not going to pay that. And we do not have any legal right to withhold that application or to deny that application according to state mandate. That's, I've got other things to say, but I just wanted to ask you that question.
Yeah, no, that's, that is technically correct, and we have been working on the legislative front to try to change that. There is more of a charge in other states, most other states that have charter schools systems charge either an administrative fee or are able to recover some of those costs a little bit easier than what's in our law. So we need some legislative help. The Comptroller's Office has, is in the process of completing a study and an analysis of those costs, which will feed into the legislative session. At the same time, we're not letting any moss grow on our efforts to dig deep into each department here to identify where those costs might be. Because two things happen when you do that. One, we find redundant costs that we can actually do away with or change the systems for, and everybody benefits, reduces our workload, and doesn't cost us anything in terms of the interface with the charters. But secondly, it enables us to begin to articulate what those costs might be so that if we're in a position to agree to those costs. And I think by and large, our charter operators would agree to those costs, even though you're correct about the technical balance of power, that we'll be in a position to, to lay out what those costs are by the time we go to budget cycle next year.
So this is in the works already, and you're hoping to see this change in next year's process?
Correct. And we're working through the Public Schools Collaborative on this issue, and there is also another study that's, that is being undertaken on the Public Schools Collaborative that plays off of the suggestion from the MGT study that we dig deeper into those indirect costs and itemizing what those direct and indirect costs might really look like. And they're going to take a much deeper dive into the fixed and variable costs that might be in place and enable us to articulate those more clearly.
Good. And would that also include charging rent in order to add the depreciation cost? Is that part of, would that be included in that application?
No, this would be, this would be separate.
Separate.
Department expenses is what we're working on.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we'll be taking into consideration this recommendation regarding the lease rate. As I think Ms. Soller said, mainly the current lease rate covers just the district's costs, utilities, that kind of thing, and with our security, and with our longer-term leases, the five-year and 10-year leases, as she's already mentioned, we do have, we do give charter operators the opportunity to make approved, district-approved capital improvements to our facilities, and then to receive rent credit back for making improvements to our facilities, which in essence reduces the rent amount that the charters pay.
Good. And the other concern that I have is the fact that when we do a conversion, and I don't know if this is state mandated or not, how did we start this, but when we do a conversion, then that is one grade at a time, and the cost to MNPS is, you know, significant. So first, is it state mandated? Is it something that can be changed? And what process would we use to change that?
Well, the history of that is important because when we put out the call for proposals for the Cameron conversion, we didn't get a whole lot of takers. We did a lot of recruiting, but there weren't a lot of organizations that were in the process or business of doing conversions, and even fewer that did conversion all at once. And so, you know, we made a few conscious efforts in that experience to support some of the costs in the transition so that we could get a good solid conversion and we could have a good solid school on the backside. So those were costs of conversion that we sort of decided that were part of the, part of the planning from the outset. It has become a model that has caused more charter school organizations to get into that game of conversion and actually begin trying to do some of that work because they were maybe more reluctant to do that when they had to change the whole school culture at once. And so I think that's probably, as much as anything, the reason that the state has largely adopted that. It's a supply issue. I think that most of the people who are doing charter school conversions are doing them one grade at a time, and that they aren't really, don't believe they have the capacity to do them all at once. Now, there are a few organizations that do, and it's just a matter of the organization's decision, really.
So it isn't state mandated?
No, the state's model grew out really of the Cameron model, but is something that enabled them to draw more charter operators into the business.
But we can offer, now that, it feels like we've set a precedent for this now, and it might be hard to change, but at the same time, I think it's something we need to consider.
Sure. I think it's... Sure, I think it's, I think it's, you know, you made that point, you know, loud and clear, and I agree with it, when we were approving the KIP conversion, and, you know, it's a conversation that continues to be ongoing, if there's a way to do it more quickly, we'll do it more quickly, because we think that that ultimately gets to the other side of those awkward transition elements.
Great.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes, I just wondered, Dr. Coverstone, what portion of the state law, in terms of charters, would prevent us from limiting the number of charters we would allow to apply per year?
Well, the, it would have to be based on the best interest standard, it would have to be based on the fiscal impact standard connected to the best interests that Mr. Pinkston has, you know, eloquently described. There is a presumption in the law that we will accept applications every year, and that we will only turn down those for which we have objective reasons for denial, that's the language in the law, and those have to be based on the best interest standards. But, we can certainly limit the number of charter applications that we approve, and we have done that every single year, including this last year.
Not the number that we approve, but the number that we accept initially.
Yeah, the law creates a presumption that we'll take any applications that come.
One other question, and, is that every year?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Okay, so, on page eight, this model is assuming that enrollment increases will slow down in the future. What is this based upon, when the city as a whole is seeing explosive population growth, and is expected to continue to grow?
The district is growing, so, the last couple of years, we've grown between 1,700 and 1,800 students, the, and we project that to continue to grow. Part of this chart was actually in the mix of how the enrollment was plugged in here, but we do intend, the district will continue to grow, and that's what the projections actually show.
Okay. This could go on all night. We're going to do one more, one, make it a good one, one last pass.
The district or the district?
Well, just the population.
Were you talking about the MN, did I hear you say the district growth, or the?
Well, just population growth, and the city of Nashville is expected to increase, explode, really, so.
So, so...
Why is it that the report?
The population of Nashville is projected to grow, the population of Nashville is growing, and our, and our total school district population is growing as well, and is projected to continue to grow. And so, the charter enrollment growth is growing at a faster clip, and is projected to grow more rapidly to offset the district growth. So, the total cumulative district growth is projected to continue to increase.
Right, you can see that in that table on exhibit three, the total enrollment in 2016-17 is projected to be 87,000. The problem is not that the city as a whole isn't growing, the problem is the portion that MNPS has of students compared to the portion that are scheduled, or projected to go to charter schools. So, if you look at the very first column, 2013-14, actual enrollment was 78,000, but projected enrollment for 2016-17 in the district is only 76,000, and the difference is that charter enrollment column in the middle.
Great.
Okay, last pass.
Last pass, all right. First of all, I just have to say, I hate this term "high-quality seat," and I know everybody uses this, but, the reason I don't like it is that because it presumes that all students are exactly the same, and we are measuring the quality of the seat by the test scores only, so, if we put a special-needs student in a seat, a special-needs student in a seat, and that student has to take the same tests as everyone else, which they do, the test scores are going to go down, and automatically, that is not as high a quality of a seat. Is it a high-quality seat if there are good test scores, but there is very poor social-emotional learning, or there's no whole-child education, and the child doesn't get any arts, or PE, or recess times? We don't really have metrics that are nuanced enough to measure those kinds of things, and we're not looking at that, we're talking about the quality of a seat. So, I think we need to look more broadly at what we believe is a quality education, Dr. Steele touched on this, you know, in some of his comments tonight, but, I think it needs to be broader than test scores, we've got to make the test scores, but I think there are other factors to consider as well. And related to that, I think, I am interested in making investments that impact the majority of students in our district, we've got 7% in the charter schools, even after several years, we're still going to have, like, 10%. And what this report is saying to me is that the unchecked growth of charter schools drains funding from the rest of the schools, and so, that is going to cause the majority of the schools to suffer and struggle. And my interest is in solutions that apply for the majority of students. So, I also want to say, I do not think that charter schools are the only solution, I don't think anybody says that at the table, but, they are also not the only, the primary solution for the majority of students, so I would like to look at other solutions, and focus on other things than charter schools, which we talk about at every meeting, because I think there are a lot of different ideas we can look into, wraparound services, and teacher partnerships with families, community engagement, those kinds of things that are really going to impact more than just the 7%. The end.
Ms. Pierce?
Okay. In the vein of trying to take the conversation more broadly, in our agenda packet tonight, the enrollment capacity was also included, which I know was not part of this study, it partially was, but I could not help but notice, in every cluster in our whole city, there is almost a 50% decline between the number of elementary-age students and high school students, and the magnet clusters were the exception. So, I think, for us to have that broader conversation, we need to uncover why, we really need to start talking about that, and in all over the city, this is not located in just parts of town where choice is easier to make. So, that has got to be a focus, and we've got to have, you know, both of our ears in listening to the reasons why, and, and really hearing those families, and knowing what was it that they were missing, what made them leave, because that's a hard, it's a hard thing to do, you're moving your house, you're paying tuition, you're homeschooling, you're going somewhere else. They have left the district, and that represents around 141 million, from a rough calculation here, that the district loses by watching those kids leave the district. So, I hope that can be part of our communication and community engagement, and hearing from them, and knowing, what do they want, how do we put it in our schools, and how do we give each child a success in a public school, no matter what the label?
Mr. Pinkston? Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Dr. Brennan asked a minute ago what part of state law addresses some of these conversations, Dr. Brennan, the Charter School Act has a line in it that says, "School boards shall not approve applications, charter applications that are, quote, 'contrary to the best interest of the pupils, school district, or community.'" And, I think there's, you know, multiple ways to interpret that, but one of them is, you know, if we want to tell the state that, look, we've reached a tipping point in any given year on the number of schools that we can absorb, and we're not going to absorb beyond this point, because we think it has a detrimental effect on our existing schools, and remember, just last year, we were at a moment where charter growth, new charter schools and growth in existing schools was consuming every dime of available new revenue. And I think that, you know, when we get to that level of magnitude, where, you know, essentially, it's all going, you know, in the door and right back out the door, with very little for the rest of the system to have access to, I think that's a clear and compelling argument to make to the state around best interests of the district. And, ma'am, I bet you're going this direction, but I would just ask that, we've been talking about this for a year, and we still, you know, aren't doing it, so I just wonder what the next steps could be, because the charter, 2015 charter review process is right around the corner, when does it start, Dr. Coverstone?
April 1st.
No, but letters of intent are due when?
February 1st.
So, it starts February 1st. So, we need to nail this down.
I got a list.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Kim, anything?
For the good of the order. You win.
Actually, actually, I'm sorry, you said February 1st, when are you publishing your RFP, your guidance to the market?
If we're going to do that, we need to do that shortly.
Okay, so, it's imminent.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
It's good.
Ms. Kim, anything?
Why are you laughing, Dr. Brennan? She's like, she's dying to say something, but she just...
You can't write it on a bathroom wall.
Yeah, I don't know, like, I, I say this every time, I'm going to say it again, anyway, just because, it's just, I don't know, like, it's just, at some level, this whole conversation, right, it is like reaching a level of just, almost like first, I mean, the, meaning, like, we've got this situation where, I mean, right, the charter sector, first of all, it's only relevant that we've been talking about them, because, number one, I mean, they're only growing because people are actually going to them. I mean, no one's making them go to, you know, no one's actually doing, no one's forcing anyone, in fact, you actually have to make an active choice to go. So, it's like, that's interesting, and I think the reason they're doing that is because we have the luxury in Nashville, which can't be said of every district who has charters in the country, we have, we have the luxury in Nashville of having a really successful sector. So, I agree with all the points, that that is not the solution for everything, and that can't be, in fact, we've got a whole bunch of schools that are not charters, and therefore, we have to invest appropriately, and do all the, like, problem-solving and interventions necessary to make sure that they're all performing at high levels. It's also undeniable that the charter sector here is particularly successful, I mean, seven of 18 reward schools in MNPS are charters, you know, and only, yeah, that, which is, and, so, in all of MNPS, only 12% of all our schools are charters, and yet, they represent 39% of the top schools in this state, from Nashville. And so, I just feel like, right, like, that's the reason why people are going to them, not, you know, and so, I feel like that is part, has to be part of the grappling, is like, when we talk about, yes, what parents want, like, they're clearly saying that they at least want this, I think they want a lot more to other various other points, but, so I guess my intuition on that stuff isn't then to figure out how to, like, clamp them down, my inclination then in that, because it's a, it's a part of the, you know, our turnaround effort, it's part of our offering choices that families want, and that they're actively voting with their feet to go to, that we've got to then figure out, again, how to deploy the billion dollars to, you know, meet those needs, and then also do all kinds of other things, so, you know, that's not the only sector, and no one is saying it's the only sector. It's just the reality is, is that no one forces anyone to go to charter, and yet, they still continue to shoot up every single year, so, and I think it's because of the results that I just noted. So, anyway.
So, I guess, I guess what I would say is, I actually believe the Board of Education's done a very good job in selecting charters, and in dealing with those that are low-performing, and that's why we have a great majority of those schools that are performing at high levels, that's one of the reasons, I think we need to recognize that, I think you need to recognize that, doesn't make the decision-making easier when we, when we choose those charters, I want to relate this at the risk of expanding the conversation, and I'd rather not do that at this point in time, because I know we're over, but, that's the challenge that we have with the priority schools now. So, the number of priority schools, or low-performing schools, in this district has increased, and, and we've identified a number of strategies for dealing with that issue now and going forward, and one of those strategies is a conversion, and you approved that conversion last year with KIP, and, so, we expect to plug that decision into a strategy to what I consider to be the most important, the goal, and that's that all of our schools are successful. And we seem to lose sight of that, and, and I'm not saying all of our charter schools are successful, I'm not saying all of our district schools are successful, other than charters, I'm saying all of our schools are successful schools. And what we're trying to do now is to deal with a comprehensive set of strategies that will use charter schools in partnership to eliminate low-performing schools, to increase success rate for those schools, and that we also have a number of strategies for turnaround that include different approaches that will eliminate priority schools, and I think that's what we have to keep in focus, and that's the goal of having successful schools. And I promise you that it's not, not easy to do, and I think as we, and as Dr. Coverstone prepares the next set, the process, and recommendations for contracts and charter approval process, that we take that into consideration, and that we modify that and make it more effective as we go forward. I don't think we've been unsuccessful.
So, I'm, go ahead, I was going to keep going, but you all keep stealing my thunder here. So, you know, Ms. Frogge, you, you mentioned your, your, I don't know, I guess, preference to not use the phrase "high-quality seat," because, so, again, I continue to say this, charter schools are a strategy, they're not a solution, they're not, they're a strategy, they're an option for, not just for parents and students, they're an option for the district to expand its offerings, for all of those different kinds of students and those different kinds of needs, they're not for everybody. You know, and Ms. Kim touched on this, you know, putting a charter school, and approving a charter school does not make, I mean, the parents are still making the choice.
That's correct.
And so, if we want to, I mean, you want to talk about a strategy to limit the number of charter schools, increase the number of high-performing district schools, it's really just that simple. If I had a school, and if I had it, and felt that my child would be successful at my community school that's been here, and you put a charter school there, there'd be no reason for me to leave, be no reason for me to make that choice, and that's what we are charged to do. If we really have that much passion about this school that happens to be labeled charter, let's do our job of improving what we're offering in our district schools, it's on us. I mean, we can keep, we can look at the state, we can look at the operators, we can look at what we're calling the movement, we can look at anything we want to, but until we, as a district, are able to provide, or at least give that level of comfort and confidence to our parents, that if I put my child in a district school, they're going to be successful, they're going to achieve, whether the yardstick is test scores, or social-emotional learning, or some combination thereof, numbers of certifications, number of IB, number of AP offerings, whatever that yardstick is, if I believe I can get that in a district school, that's where my child will be. But until I can, I can offer that, and feel that level of confidence, I will always be looking for choices, whether it's labeled charter, whether it's labeled private, whether it's labeled homeschool, whether it's labeled Williamson County, I'm always going to be looking for the choice that's going to guarantee the academic success of my child. Mr. Pinkston read something in the statute that said about making decisions that are contrary to the, you know, we can always flip that, right? And so, that's where I want to go on the next steps, and the recommendation that I would be looking for from the Central Office with regards to the data that we now have in front of us from MGT, is what's going to support the district, right? So, it's kind of the corollary, we can say, because of fiscal impact, I don't think we have, still don't have a nail on, right, we don't have a real bead on that from a quantifiable perspective, there's not a hard number, because they're costs that we haven't been able to factor in. But we can say, based on the profile of my district, where my failing schools are located, where my priority schools are located, where I'm having unabated growth of, I guess you, I shouldn't call it unabated growth of students, but, where I'm having to place portables, based on that profile of my district, this is where a, the strategy of placing a charter operator would really alleviate some of the strain and pressure that I'm feeling in the district. So, again, if we can make that, paint the framework of what our needs are, from a gain, what I always boil it down to is charter operators are vendors, and I would not have a vendor come to me with their own idea of what I need, I would paint my needs for that vendor, and ask them to partner with me in getting to the end goal that I want as a district. So, I think, unless anyone else disagrees, as far as next steps are concerned, because we're going to probably have to have some meetings that are off-schedule, so that the Office of Innovation in the Charter School Group can, can do their piece of putting out this RFP, for lack of a better phrase, for the applications to begin to come in. But, take in what we have, let's have something on paper that we can agree on, and move forward with, with regards to the application process. You just itching to say something?
No, I just, I just want to say, to MGT, I mean, I think this decision model is pretty common sense, and it's kind of what we tried to do this year, but we didn't articulate it that clearly and cleanly, and, you know, why don't we just start by, at some point, by accepting that, and then get some experience with it, and see what worked, what didn't, and then...
And so, what I, and so, what I would just say to that is, you know, you're right, we did not articulate it as clearly as this, but I think we need to come, we need to create it together. I don't think just putting it out there, and asking the office to come up with something, and then being challenged at their interpretation of what our expectations are, didn't quite align, let's create it together, let's sign off on it together, and then we can move forward on the process. Anything burning that is just going to really make a big difference in this conversation?
Just one more.
Yeah, okay, I'll hold you to it, making a big difference in this conversation.
I just want to say, it is hard to argue with what you're saying in terms of... I just want to say, it is hard to argue with what you're saying in terms of if parents are choosing a school or parents are choosing charters. The big thing that, that concerns me is when they're able to give incentives such as computers. Metro schools can't compete with that. So those things concern me. But I love what you said about, we need to come up with a policy that we, that we say these are our priorities for deploying future charter schools. And then hold the Office of Innovation accountable that if it's not, if it doesn't meet those priorities, we never see it. That's first and foremost.
Oh, I just have to interrupt you. I didn't say any of that. So I didn't say policy.
I said policy.
Yeah, you did. I didn't say policy. And I, because this has to be an annual thing. So if there is a policy, the policy would simply say that we would, on an annual basis, assess what's going on in our district so that we can then paint the framework of how we, what we're looking for in charter operators or whatever, whoever else comes along, because I think, I don't think this is it. I'm coming up with something in my garage right now for, I'm just kidding. Another model. No. So whatever that, that, whether it's a charter operator or whether we're looking for, I mean, it could be anything. It could be that a part of that, wouldn't it be great if we could actually get to painting what our needs are as a district that was just bigger than charter schools? That, you know, over here we need to partner with charter operators, over here we need to place two or three more pre-K centers. It's bigger than this. It's bigger, it's bigger, it's bigger, it's bigger than just this topic. And so I think this is, again, I continue to say, this is a sliver, this is a piece of what we need to be able to do on an annual basis, is to articulate our needs based on academic performance, based on population growth, based on all of those things, to be able to paint what we then look to the district to help us go find us some good partners, be they charter operators, be there somebody who can come and, and explain, expand community achieves, whether it's someone who can put in a pre-K, it's bigger than just this. This is one option that we have to help provide academic success for our students, just one. Just one. Okay. Can we move to the next topic? Yes. Silence is consent. All right. Any questions on the tribal?
I did have one.
It better be good, guys.
First of all, let me say that this entire conversation about charter schools just makes my chest burn and it makes me nervous. I am a mother of two children at a charter school. My daughter is medically fragile and she's reading at, she's eighth grade, reading at a 12.8th grade level in a charter school, functioning well. So these conversations are very passionate. But one of the questions that I really want to ask, and I'll let this go, and it all stems around money and finances, but metro, the district spends 13 point, $13,064 per student, whereas charters, according to the report, charter spend $9,776. So as we look at the growth and as we analyze this data, is that $3,000 per student analysis included anywhere in this report?
I'll touch on that. I noticed the link in the question and thank you for sending the link because I had not seen this report, which is based upon fiscal year 2010, 2011, which the district's operating budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011 was $640 million. And so the $13,000 figure that's used in the report is based upon expenditures of about a billion dollars, which I'm not sure what all goes into that. I know Ms. Kim has touched on a billion dollar amount a couple of times, which has to include all of the debt service that's assigned to us by metro government, as well as all of the, the capital improvement spending, as well as all of the, the federal funds. And so that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. The dollar amount that goes, that flows to charters is calculated by the State Department of Education for us, based upon the total state and local revenue that the school district receives, which is basically the entire operating budget for the school district. And so the comparison that's used in, in this report, and again, that was the first time I had seen it, and I appreciate that being pointed out to me. I'm not sure, I would want to dig further to see where that comparison comes from, because if we were to use a $13,000 figure for, per student, that's going to obviously greatly exceed what our operating budget was back in 2010, 11.
Okay. Thank you. Um, private day, anybody else want to invite some technical people?
Yes, I'm going to find this group and I'll ask Dr. Coverstone and Dr. Steele to come up.
I think we can get started.
You think? Okay. All right. Great.
Don't ever do that. Go ahead.
Thank you all for asking us to share our experience with Tribal and the recommendations that they delivered to us and the work that they did in the district. Because we have a number of new board members and because this engagement happened, you know, three years ago, we wanted to take some time to just make sure we had the contours of what happened and a little bit of a background as to what it was that Tribal, as an organization, brought to the district. Dr. Steele and I will be tag teaming through the presentation here and then it'll be quick and then we'll take your questions on the back end. But if you'll start with the, the timeline, which was this handout that has the dates along the side. The engagement with Tribal began when we issued an RFP in 2011, early January 2011, to find an organization that would assist with high priority schools. High priority school status is a status that existed under the AYP designation of the pre-Tennessee waiver accountability system that was under No Child Left Behind. We had a growing number of high priority schools that we were concerned about and we issued an RFP to try to find some support from places with organizational experience in helping to turn around schools. In July of 2011, Tribal made its first presentation to 33 schools, which were our high priority schools at the time, to the principals of those schools at a high priority summer institute at the Martin Center. And then they began their work in October of 2011 through May of 2012. That was their first year of school engagements. And the bulk of the work that they did was at the school level, engaging leadership teams, engaging faculties and staff and occasionally families and students to build a school improvement planning process and school improvement process from the inside of the school out. And I'll talk more about that in just a second. In February of that year, that first year, Tennessee's AYP waiver was approved by the U.S. Department of Education. This is important because the designation and the accountability system that identified high priority schools that, that wound up working with Tribal changed dramatically. And so some of the schools that are currently on the priority list were not associated with Tribal at all, weren't engaged because the accountability system hadn't identified them. And under the new accountability system that came as part of that waiver, they then were subsequently identified. The second year of Tribal's engagement happened on the backside in September 2012 through June of 2013. And at the end of that year, for a variety of reasons, we sent notice to terminate the contract of Tribal and they finished their work in, in metro schools in June of 2013. So that gives you a little bit of a framework of the time that we're dealing with and, and the time that we're talking about. Tribal is a company, the Inspiration Schools Partnership is really the, is really the activities that were associated with linking schools together for school improvement. And Tribal came at school improvement, according to this slide here, they always began their presentations with this slide, identifying school improvement as a process that was better completed from the inside out than from the outside in. They articulated ways in which central office decision-making or one-off set pieces for whole school reform would be brought to a school and then that school would have limited, a limited degree of buy-in or engagement. You had oftentimes reform fatigue in the schools and the ownership was never there. And that was what they said was one of the main deficiencies of school improvement strategies that worked from the outside in. And so they tried to work from the inside out. And what that essentially meant was that they were engaged with the schools in a circular process that's laid out here on this slide. They started with school engagement. So they began by meeting the principals, they began by getting the schools together and they treated them as a network. The idea was that the ideas for school improvement existed within the schools and the network and that if the network of schools got together, no school is bad at everything, every school is good at something, and if they can find the way to connect those things that they're good at with one another, they can build school improvement planning processes through networking that are going to be stronger than the sort of outside in, you know, big box kind of reforms that they, that they were counter to. After the school engagements, they then engaged in a desktop analysis, which is essentially a deep dive into the data that the school had available, all of its achievement and growth data, its demographic data, its attendance, discipline, teacher attendance, et cetera, and put together an overview of what the data was telling them about the school. They then subsequently engaged in what was really their proprietary tool, and that was known as the Navigator Self-Review. The Navigator is a computerized tool that enabled every individual, as many as, as you wanted really, but in every individual member of the faculty and staff, as well as parents and community members, if the school wanted to, leadership team members and the like, to respond about their school and to rate the conditions and state of their school in three areas, the culture of the school, the engagement in the school, are the students engaged, are the faculty engaged with one another, and the processes and systems in the school. And they had three or four questions under each of those that every faculty member responded to in an anonymous fashion. As they responded, they were also then asked to suggest an action step that would help them go from where they rated the school, perhaps at a beginning level, to where they'd like the school to go at developing level or an embedded level or a world-class exemplary level. This simple tool then enabled them to aggregate all of the recommendations, all of the potential action steps that the faculty brought to bear, all of the ratings that the faculty brought to bear, and be able to feed that back to the faculty and back to the leadership team as part of their school improvement planning process. So they triangulated the desktop analysis, what the hard data in the school was saying, against the Navigator Self-Review, the perceptions of the people in the building. And then they added an external review to triangulate against that. And because they were from England, the external reviews were based on the Ofsted inspection system, which is how schools in the United Kingdom are evaluated and assessed. This is an external review process they take very seriously, it's a very big deal. And this was a, a process that was modeled on that and built from some leading, some of the people who had been involved in the Ofsted process in the United Kingdom. And indeed Tribal was a company that contracted with Ofsted to provide external support, external reviews. When they did the external reviews, then they were able to triangulate what they saw against what the hard data was showing and against what the self-perceptions of the people in the building were saying. And they then engaged with the leadership team first, fed back to the faculty second, to support the annual school improvement planning process at the school, so that the school could build an inside-out of school improvement, school improvement plan that would enable them to move forward, rather than continuing to take outside-in sorts of approaches. And then in the end, once all of the various observations of the schools were in place, they had a network, they had promising practices that they might identify in several of the schools in the network, and those schools would then be encouraged to share with the other schools in the network as well. So that's essentially the process that they were engaged in. Time has passed at these schools, all but one of the current priority schools that they reviewed has a new leader now. New leadership retains the school-level autonomy to build these inside-out plans, but those plans will still reflect the annual school improvement and continuous improvement planning cycles that they informed with the recommendations that they devised from the self-perceptions of the school, their external look at the school, and the hard data that they brought to the school and supported the leadership team in analyzing and turning into a school improvement plan two or three years ago.
All right. So the next slide talks about the recommendations that were school-based that came out of the Tribal report. And they focused around culture, engagement, and process. So these are the buckets I'm going to refer to and just give you some of the things that we have implemented, just briefly. So the first one, teacher effectiveness, that was one of the areas that they wanted us to stress. Out of that became the, that came the instructional rounds model, which you have a handout from the Teaching and Learning Committee before this, but we didn't get to discuss that, that we're actually, we've been implementing every year and we're doing that again this year in the priority schools. It also gave us a focus on standards, all of the professional development, which led into the, the Common Core standards being implemented and how teachers led that process of deconstructing those standards and building our scope and sequence. They felt moving to a scope and sequence was the, the most high-yield strategy that we could do around Common Core and working with our teachers to do that. So that is implemented, that has been led by teachers. And also school-based and teacher-led PD, that was a big thing. They, they did not want PD pushed into the schools, we agreed with that, that needed to come from within based on the school's data. So school-based and teacher-led PD. And also eventually that led to the lead coach model, using the expertise in the building through networks of coaches. The next one is the data-driven decision-making process. This led to the revamping of the school improvement process to make sure that that process was at a much deeper level. So as a result, we have a manual that guides the schools through what true school improvement looks like, which leads them to budget flexibility within federal and state parameters around what the school improvement plans must address in each school. That also led to staffing flexibility within the schools. So data-driven process also led to the continuous improvement model. They actually hired Claire Sell-Davis, which was an expert in the continuous improvement model. And after Tribal left, we actually continued working with Claire for one year. This is the first year we haven't used her because that process has been embedded now in the school district, the continuous improvement process. The next one is differentiated instruction, giving, focusing on a course Common Core and how we would make that come alive. We decided to take that into project-based learning to focus on teacher creativity with the Common Core standards and the use of technology. So the Tribal reports were very effective in letting the schools have that voice in what technology we were using and what they could purchase and how it would be used through project-based learning. Effective teaming, this was a very, very high-yield strategy that we have implemented at the highest level. Building in collaborative time for all of our high schools and middle schools and elementary now have common planning time. We achieved that last year in all schools. And we have implemented at the high school and the middle school level, highly effective team training with American Alliance for Innovative Schools. And now it's embedded within ourselves, with our own people, leading that process. And with that, we created a collaborative planning guide that guided the conversation during those planning times, focusing on instruction, formative assessment results in the data, and what, how that would drive the instruction. The last piece is the school-wide positive behavior expectations. This was, led to the social emotional learning and led us to CASL and embedding those behaviors and activities in our schools. And also focuses around the wraparound support services and that Tony spoke earlier about with community schools approach. The next slide, we'll get to the district systemic reforms. And that was several things here that are implemented and in a phase and approach, the networking and network leads. That was one of the big things. That was one of the big things, building robust communities of networks of schools that were having best practice or having success as a collective impact approach, but also partnering with those schools who needed that mentoring. So, that led to the networks. We actually implemented the network that was the model which was across England. A group of principals and I actually traveled to England to see it and worked with David Crossley, who had left TRIBAL, to find out what the model looked like on the ground. We brought that back, and we implemented now in our third year of networks. We have one more year to complete that process out. We actually took it a little bit further and created network coaches. So, we have school-based expertise around curriculum and instruction that are leading, there are 16 of those. So, there's 15 networks with 75 schools in those networks now. That also led to principal autonomy around staffing and flexible budgeting. And that is implemented now in almost all of our schools. Next year, it will be completely phased in, and the principals have complete control of their budgets within parameters, of course. There's still federal and state laws we have to follow there. The academic performance framework came out of the TRIBAL work, and they worked with Dr. Chengus in his office to create that report and develop those formulas, you're very well aware of that. And then, the data-driven decision-making. Here's where a lot of dashboards were continuing to develop, and you've seen some of those dashboards, but you've also seen the data walls in our school. That was a TRIBAL practice that we learned and saw firsthand on the trip in England with the principals. And the principals brought it back and have implemented that across the district in different forms, what was best for their schools and how to use the data. So, that was a practice that came out of the TRIBAL network.
Of course, implementation is the key to the success of the schools. And so, we've provided as much data as we can here for you. So, if you'll turn your attention to this chart to just make sure that we're oriented, this chart represents all of the schools that were engaged with TRIBAL. These were the schools that were identified as high-priority schools under the old accountability system. Across the second and third columns tell you exactly when TRIBAL did its external review or its Navigator review with the school, and when it was engaged in the school. You can see the principal turnover in the schools, as well as when the most recent principal became the principal of the school. We've then put in success rate gains, given that we're focused on priority schools at the moment. The success rate is the state's rate for measuring the raw achievement levels and identifying the bottom 5% schools. You can see that with the exception of two schools, all of these schools did move forward during the past three years as well. You can see what their one-year success rate last year and the three-year average is. And then, of course, we have the academic performance framework measures, their overall measures for 2013, 2014, and their three-year average. So, we'll allow you to digest that material as we go along. Clearly, there are some successes and some challenges that remain. Because the state's accountability system changed in 2012, these seven schools that are currently identified as priority schools were not engaged with TRIBAL at the time. They were not identified under the old priority system. That's one factor that we need to bear in mind. And as we're looking toward individualized turnaround plans for all our priority and bottom 25% schools, we need to remember that school improvement plans built during the engagement are part of the school improvement design that they have at their disposal today. And a number of the issues that were identified are difficult issues, tough nuts to crack, and their culture issues, their engagement issues, their process issues. And these are the issues that high-performing, successful, strong, and enriching schools have, that low-performing, struggling, and priority schools struggle with. And so, engaging in those and targeting those is only the first step in beginning to address those needs and build a school that can be high-performing. And these schools are on their journey to varying degrees, and you can see the degrees to which they've made that progress in the chart that is attached here. We know ultimately that school improvement plans are only as strong as the people and teams who implement them, and that's why we're also prioritizing talent acquisition in our response to priority schools. It's why there's been turnover in these schools, and it's why we are attempting to make sure that we have some really top-flight teams of people who can engage in developing strong cultures, strong engagement cycles, and strong processes and systems to make the schools be as effective as possible. Last thing I'll say is that with the exception of one school, new leaders are in place in each of the newly identified priority schools that had engaged with TRIBAL. And so, in many cases, the original engagement was with a prior principal who's not there anymore, but the reports continue to be an asset and continue to be something that the school's annual school improvement planning process has embedded in it and can draw on as they go forward. So, with that, we want to leave it to you for questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And looking through all these reports, I was sort of trying to look for common themes. And the two common themes that I saw in the schools that are remaining on the list are that they are serving a very, very high percentages of free reduced lunch students, over 95%, and that the schools tend to have student discipline or safety issues, which is not surprising, because there's lots of research that says severe chronic poverty can cause behavioral issues, can cause increased mobility, and these are the schools that have to keep every child, no matter their behavior or their circumstances. So, I'm wondering, are we, how are we addressing safety issues? Because if we don't, if our schools aren't safe, you know, if there are issues about, around violence or major discipline problems, no one, you know, is going to select that school.
So, a lot of it is tied up in the work that Tony's doing now with the community schools effort and the wraparound services that are intended to provide support for students in these schools that are heavily impacted with economically disadvantaged children and children who have a lot of extra needs. We're implementing systems like the positive behavior support systems in schools and looking at other means now of providing additional resources in those schools.
So, are we doing that specifically at the schools? I was looking at Napier, Brick Church, Bailey, and Buena Vista. Do they have extra staffing, or do they have?
Yes. And actually, when the priority list came out, I'm going to ask Jay to be, to give some more specifics on this, but when the priority schools list came out in August, really, the first thing that we asked was that the principals and leadership teams in those schools let us know what else they needed, what resources they needed, and we've already dedicated, and I think you've seen a list of those, support systems that have been put in place. That's not everything we'd like to do, but at this point in time and budget, it's something that we could do pretty quickly. So, many of those additional supports are being provided now. Tony is working to really look at a way to grow the community schools effort in addition to the academic supports that are being put in place. Jay, any other comments?
You covered it.
Okay.
Ms. Pierce, you come back to me. Mr. Bingsden?
Dr. Grabberstone, you said the time, quote-unquote, "that time has passed at these schools," which I think you're suggesting that the TRIBAL reviews may now be dated or obsolete. And I would just suggest that based on the overall culture of the district, that some of these recommendations might still be viable. Bottom line is, we have eight current priority schools that were the subject of TRIBAL reviews. Four of them were on the previous state priority list, which essentially means we had four schools that made little progress, if any, and another four that actually slid backward relative to the rest of the state following TRIBAL. So, I have three questions for each of these eight schools. We're obviously not going to be able to answer them tonight, but I would like to request a report to the board before any structural decisions are made around these schools, like closure, consolidation, conversion, and so forth. And the questions for each school are really simple. Number one, which TRIBAL recommendations were implemented? Number two, which ones weren't and why? And then, number three, of those recommendations that were implemented, how do we know it occurred with fidelity? I'll look at Napier as an example. I won't review the entire nine-point area of focus that TRIBAL suggested, but one example jumped out at me in the external review. Quote, "Implement a rigorous assessment system that identifies how and when students' progress should be assessed and monitored, and what should be done with the outcomes in order that more time is available for teaching than assessing," end quote. So, I'd like to know whether that was done at Napier and whether it happened with fidelity, which is a subjective, you know, assessment. So, assessment's a bad word, excuse me. A subjective comment, but if there's any way to objectively demonstrate that it happened with fidelity, that would be great. And I just want to be clear, I'm not interested ordinarily in the board diving, Dr. Gentry diving this deep into individual schools, but because of the crisis situation that has developed in these particular schools, I think we're obligated to look under every rock that's out there to drive improvement. To me, it only makes sense to start with these TRIBAL reviews that cost us millions and millions of dollars. So, the key question is, how hard would it be to pull together that information, school by school?
Well, let me first say, I didn't mean to suggest that these were in some way useless or outdated. I didn't say outdated. I think time has passed. They're embedded in the schools. They've been part of the target that they've been after for a couple of years, and it takes some time. Now, in the case of Napier, that is a focal point that they have implemented pretty strongly, and I encourage you to come over and see it with us, you know, tomorrow. I think you'd really appreciate what you see. Pulling out each of the recommendations and addressing whether they were implemented or not and why, largely, the why has to do with the team in place and the transitions and the turnovers that have happened from year to year. And so, I think that would be more difficult to get your head around. I think that's more subjective than you probably think, but certainly, we could pull together any kind of report that you want.
Do you disagree?
I'm sorry?
I just wonder if anybody disagrees, you know, with the idea of just sort of stepping back and taking a school-by-school look, particularly around these eight priority schools.
Well, that's pretty much what we're doing now, and we're looking not just a two-year-old TRIBAL report. We know what's been implemented, but we're also, we're doing instructional rounds now in all of these schools, and we're looking at other requests for assistance to these schools. So, it is a personalized plan for each one of these 13 priority schools to look at what we've done, what else is needed, and how quickly can we implement that now, or does it take structural change and longer-range decisions? So, that's very much part of the process that's going on now. I don't think that it would be very difficult for us to look at the old TRIBAL reports that were written and to give you an assessment of what's been implemented and what hasn't.
When can we get that?
We'll need to meet with each, we'll need to meet with each principal and ask them to write that up for us.
You're going to have to give us a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Manpower.
I can't give you an answer right now. We'd have to look at, get each principal, sit down with each principal, get them to go through the report and write it up for us.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Camia, if you would please just put that at the bottom under Board Chair's Report, just to, just ask how that's progressing. That would be helpful. Ms. Cam, anything?
Yeah, well, yeah. I have an exhibit.
That you can clearly read from across the room.
Which is only meant to illustrate one point. So, this is a dashboard that I use at work. I get it every single day. And it's tracking a whole bunch of different things. As you can see, it's color-coded in order for me to be able to pinpoint what's happening. And I will say that, and you can even see like a rank order listing by performance, you can see all different kinds of things that you want to cut the data by and different charts that help you sort of understand what's happening. My experience, over 15 years of managing this particular effort, for which we've been producing dashboards every single day for 15 years, with varying levels of sophistication, like the dashboards have gotten more sophisticated, they look much prettier, they're much easier to deal with, like, it's like, that has improved. But I will say that the most difficult thing, like, and we also know that the people who are at the bottom of the list and the people who are at the top of the list, there are real reasons why that is true, like, very real reasons. And to the degree that we are not able, and I call this out on myself as a manager, but to the degree that we're not able to move these people up the list, up to here as quickly as we want, is not because we don't know what needs to be, like, we lack the knowledge. It's literally like the strength of our conviction and the courage to address it. Every single time, it is so hard. Like, I'm in debates all day long about how do we actually do this intervention? The hard part is not knowing, like, what the strategy is, it's literally intervention. And so, I guess I say this only because I want to acknowledge this, because we know it's hard. Like, that is the hardest part, is like, you know what needs to be done, and you get the data every single day. And then, the hard part is just having the courage, again, to like, manage with, you know, conviction, clarity, fidelity to what we said needs to change. Like, I do, I mean, I agree with Will just broadly in terms of, like, we do need to move with urgency. And I guess my thought is, like, my guess is, like, if I can manage this little operation this way, and I know the challenge is even in doing that, like, it's ever so much bigger in this particular operation with 150-plus schools, 6,000 employees, et cetera. And, yeah, I guess I just want to sort of underscore the point, whether it's through TRIBAL, it's like, it could be through TRIBAL, it could be any number of, like, I'm sort of agnostic about the TRIBAL thing or not, or like, it's mostly, it's just like, I want to just call out that I know that the interventions are extremely hard, and therefore, that we have to be that much more urgent and that much more courageous about making sure they happen, you know? Because I just, I can't, yeah. Yeah. It can't be that much different than trying to, you know, operate this. Well, except harder. That's what's different. So, yeah, I do think then, like, being able to like dive in at the level of the school, being really honest, even with us, like, to, you know, your point, Dr. Gentry, at various points, are like, what do you need, what needs to be true in order for us to make progress? I'm very eager, open, let's have honest conversations about that, because we know it's hard, and we know it takes a lot of courage to actually make the changes that are necessary, and people won't always like it, and all these kinds of issues. So, I would only say, yes, urgency, I feel it, I agree, we need to move fast. And, yeah, that's it.
So, I want to take some responsibility as a board member for us having a conversation about a two-year-old report, because that's, again, that falls back on us. We knew the report was being commissioned, we did follow up, which is why I turned to Ms. Bobo and said, please make sure that the request is on there. And we've got to do a better job. We've got to do a better job, which is actually our only job, other than, you know, a couple of other things, budgeting, et cetera, is to monitor. And we commission, we ask for reports, we send people out, we approve, as we'll say, millions and millions of dollars to be spent, but then we never come back and close the loop on the conversation to give you all the support you need to make the hard decisions. Because decisions have to be made, but it always helps to have some cover to have to do that. And so, you know, one of the things that I, you know, to put on my politician hat for two seconds, is to promise to do a better job of closing the loop on some of these things. And we've got so many things just hanging out there, that we expect by some miracle for them to get closure on their own, for there to be implementation and automatic success when we're not monitoring. And as I say, we get what you inspect and not what you expect. So, we're going to commit to being better partners in that space.
Okay. Ms. Pierce?
Oh, yes. Another common theme throughout the reports was time, time for teachers for professional development. And I know there's been some discussion about that over the last few months because of the law that changed in terms of how much we can take that, their teachers' planning time. But yet, we know clearly that teachers need that kind of professional development and time to work together. And throughout these reports also, we saw that there are pockets of excellence in each of these schools. However, if we can't access it and learn from those excellent teachers, we're losing a wonderful opportunity. So, what do you need? What do we need to do as a board to help provide the time that teachers need in order to learn from one another with professional development at the building level?
Well, I think that's the answer to that, is it's resources, investment in resources to really buy time. And I say that we're pretty proud of what we've done over the last year with, if you look at the All-Star Training, it's outstanding, and we've got 98% of our teachers now who have demonstrated competence in use of technology to differentiate instruction, and we're really focusing on professional development in our district. We think that's a great investment, use of resources. So, I think we have to continue efforts like that. That was a major commitment on the part of the district to do that, and we were very successful with that.
And I know that teachers need time to observe other teachers in the building. Is that something that we're working toward?
Well, that's the reason why... Well, that's the reason why we really believe, and back to original plans, investing in instructional leadership at the school level and having instructional coaches at the school level, not housed in the district office. Prior to your coming on the board, but I know you're aware of this, we've really moved instructional leadership out into the buildings and we feel like we're putting, we're really beefing up that support system, school by school, so that schools can plan that. We also believe very strongly that schools ought to really drive, for the most part, their professional development work based on their school improvement plans and what they know are needed. Jay, any comments?
Of course. I will say, this is my first year over all three tiers, where I have direct influence of what's happening in elementary, middle, and high. We created, while Tribal was here, we created PD demonstration schools. These were model schools that had effective teams working together and were getting those results. And we started with two high schools. We expanded, two years ago, to the middle and this past year to elementary. And that has been wildly successful. Teachers love going in, having that reflection. And there was a protocol built around it about what you're seeing, having those conversations at the end of what you're observing with those teachers, why you did this, and then a two-week follow-up with those teachers. That was extremely powerful and impacted several classrooms. Again, that's time, getting those teachers out of their classrooms into that, so there's an expense to that. We use Race to the Top money to fund those. That's gone now, so that practice does cost money. One of the things I hear from teachers the most is we need more planning time upfront, additional days for planning, whether that looks like adding days on the calendar upfront, which is an expense, whether it's adding days throughout the year and spreading out the calendar a little bit, which we know people sometimes, you know, parents don't like that, whether it's a late start, early release, there's many ways to achieve that. In the high school scheduling, we give teachers 30 minutes additional planning, 90 minutes, 60 minutes was required. We give them 90 minutes because we believe that that is very powerful and impactful for them to collaborate as a group. So we're actually going above and beyond what is required in the high schools. Middle schools are, the middle and elementary schedules are so tight that they're at the limit. 60 minutes required in elementary. I think we're around 55 in the middle.
If I could just piggyback, also, we have invested a lot of the SIG money in the priority schools that existed previously in extra planning and extra professional development times. Been the largest investments that we've been making, but that's not sustainable after the grant disappears. And so we've also engaged and redesigned up the schools so that we have multiple teachers in the same classrooms and we have a career progression from aspiring teachers through multi-classroom leaders or master teachers that are working with teams and teachers together to try to capitalize on some of exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you. Dr. Brennan?
Yeah.
Anything else burning on this?
Jay, would you say that they're given autonomy, which you're saying are almost all of them now, over their budget and staffing? Is that correct? Do you think they, would they say they feel like they have autonomy? Have you all asked? I mean, do you know?
Yes, I would say that there was a lot of training that went in, that Alan and his team and Derek worked with the principals on what this looks like and how to move to it. That's why it was phased in. We just didn't want to jump into it without any prior training to that. There are parameters, there are state laws that they have to follow about how many teachers, the class size. So they would say that they don't have complete autonomy around those issues because you have to have guidance councils, you have to have class size, you have to meet class-size amendments. Other than that, everything that they submitted, if it was within the law, was approved for them.
That's a process, it's a learning process for administrators. That's one of the things that we have to learn from our charter collaborative, I think. Those charter leaders have a great deal more autonomy than our people do. And it is a learning process for our principals. We have gone very far down the road toward increasing autonomy for principals. And I think one really good example is changes that have been made in human capital to allow principals much greater flexibility and an opportunity to hire staff schools earlier by hiring the teachers that they want, by hiring their own assistant principals. That's a big component there. We're not completely autonomous yet, but we're moving down that road. The next step is weighted student funding formulas that will, I think, where the funds actually follow the students. And Chris Henson and Derek and others are working very diligently on expanding that process. So I think we're moving along very nicely in that regard.
So Chris just brought to my attention, it's 55 schools that have that budget flexibility and autonomy now. It's all high schools, all middle schools, six elementary, and then next year, all schools will have it. So it's been a three-year phase-in.
That's what I hear. I mean, that's what I hear that schools want, parents want, leaders want, is they want the freedom and the autonomy that our charters have without the drama. And so how can we get them that? How can we move that? And then my only other comment is just, this only represents 33 schools, right? The Tribal review, and we have over 100 others. You know, would more reviews like this be beneficial? Did you find it beneficial?
Well, so I think what's really important is that we took away quite a bit from Tribal. They were with us for two years. And when they made a decision to terminate the contract, it was an annual renewal over a period of time. And I think we learned from them a lot of the processes that are institutionalized now in our school system. For example, instructional rounds that we've talked about and the networks that we're developing in our school system now that Jay talked about earlier. So we're institutionalizing a lot of what we learned from them now. And I would say that we kept the best there. In the second year, there were several things that happened. At the end of the first year, one of the principal, and I think the most significant leader for that effort, David Crossley, left the company and left our work here. In the second year, the second principal manager left, and that's at the time when we were deciding not to continue that contract. So, but I think we picked up over that two-year period of time and incorporated what we thought was of value from that, even to the IT department and the construct of the academic performance framework. So I think we gained a lot from that, and I think we terminated that contract at the right time. And I will say that in December of 2012, we did have a public press conference to review the data and board members were invited to that conference. It was covered by the local media. Very closely after that meeting, council member Emily Evans requested and was given the full Tribal reports and the other best of online. So they've been online since December of 2012.
Okay. As we wrap up, can't hint and a storm, rain comes down, I do want to just say thank you for making that comment because we shouldn't have to go out and pay another million dollars to do this. And so that's why we asked the question of how are we identifying best practices in our school and what do you need from us and get some assistance in replicating that. But I do want to recap for Ms. Bobo to add a section called unfinished business at the bottom of the agenda. We don't have to report on it, but we will raise it up as a question to see how are we on the recommendations as you review the MGT report so we can come together and decide the framework for application review for charters. And then the next ask was practices, and I think I'll simplify the question, I hope I'm appropriate, what practices and recommendations from the Tribal report have been implemented at these schools? How are they faring? I'll expand it just to say, you know, should we look to those to replicate across some of the other schools and should we be looking for those in the strategies and plans for the priority schools that are currently on the 2014 list? So I want to thank you all for your time and attention to review these. Thank you to the central office for preparing and answering our questions around this data. And we'll see you in two weeks, believe it or not. We'll do it again. Thank you. What would I say? We're going to start.